We need to.
I'm gonna call me in. To do my here, that's the top. David. Thank you. Rob.
Here.
And I'm so here.
Yes, it was.
Thank you, please.
I believe this is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a voluntary commitment statement.
The Mount Auburn area school district in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, challenging our students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible themselves, fulfill the numbers of society.
Put A approval agenda. So move second. Motion to approve, second by Jim Booth, end of discussion. All those of their say hi.
Aye.
For both.
May I am president, I'm sorry, I missed the first, who made the motion?
Tegan and Gilbert. For to be approval of the April first, we give them this.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Rob, second by Jeff, and the upstate. Okay, all those of their say hi.
Aye.
For both, upstate. Alright, I've been looking at to three of the voters.
You could be able to say.
It's gonna be his name, right?
So because Jeff is. I'm gonna help out. So actually, I will read it and you guys, if you can then follow me. So I will say aye, and then you guys need to say your names, and then I'll give a praise if you follow. So I.
Aye.
Jeff Hannah, didn't say names, please.
Japan.
Kimberly, see I would.
Having been elected to the office of Board of Education.
Having been elected to the office of Board of Education.
Of the Mount Auburn area school district.
The Mount Auburn area school district.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
Upset office to the best of my ability.
Upset office to the best of my ability.
So help me that.
Well, help me that.
Congratulations.
Another tour of duty, how great and how fortunate we are to have your continued leadership. A compliment and already very. And on behalf of our faculty and staff, I offer you our deepest gratitude and thanks for accepting the call to continue service. Do you have how many years now?
Too many.
Is this the?
This is start with nineteen.
Nineteen years, and Leah, this is your third term? And Kimberly, we're so fortunate to have you in your second term, right?
Correct.
That's wonderful, thank you, let's give a round of applause.
Alright, moving on to four A school clips.
Well, I had a wonderful visit today with our student representative Kenzie, and we have some great things we'd like to share with you. She'd be here tonight, but unfortunately their soccer team was rescheduled for our five o'clock kickoff because of the snow we had on Thursday. But suffice to say, we want to congratulate our future problem solvers who went to the state bowl this past last three days, over the weekend, had a heck of a showing. In fact, if I remember right, seeing some pictures of the police department and fire department bringing our kids into town, just like we do for athletes, why not do it for our scholars as well? And in fact, on April the twenty ninth, when the board has their workshop, we intend to bring a recommendation that that team, I believe it would be about seven students, be able to go to the University of Wisconsin, University of Massachusetts at Amherst, I should say. And that will take place, I think, in July, if everyone knows right, so we'll ask for travel out of state. Also wanted to let everyone know about a fantastic community-wide dinner that's gonna take place a week from tonight, over at the high school. It'll be at five P M. Many of you know of the good work of a group called Serve to Unite. We've been working with Kardip and others within the community to continue having conversations around race and culture and respect. And that gets underway, supper at five o'clock, bring a dish to pass, bring your own utensils, and then at six thirty, actual presentation that'll take place at the high school. Those of you who were around on Friday afternoon and with little ones probably knew that there's a kindergarten program that was going on over at the E L C, and I heard they just had a wonderful spring sing, those little faces always just melt my heart. The I C, you guys had a science fair last week along with an art show, Left Brain, Right Brain. Boy, talk about good things happening there. And then middle school is in the middle of board exams. Well, everyone's kind of in the middle of board exams, but hoping our students are continuing to prepare themselves for those important events. Lastly, I want to remind the community that this Thursday evening at six P M in this very room will be a community forum. Here it is, our board again availing themselves so that we can learn more from our community. This time, the topic is around school resource officers and whether or not that could or could not be a good fit for our school district. That'll get underway at six o'clock. And then tomorrow night, the Mental Health and Wellness Community Coalition will be meeting at five o'clock over at the Dribbler Storey. Just to make sure if I haven't missed anything else. Lots of good things happening.
Thank you. Band show is a little more wickiedown. I don't forget. Damn, absolutely amazing.
There's a heck of a drummer out there.
Yes, yeah.
Boy.
You had a lot of fun.
He was awesome, well, the whole crew was just amazing. At the end, with the Rocky Thump, that man in distance circling ourselves.
And yet there's hopeless. Alright, moving on to four B's to the comments. Alright, moving on to five A, recommendation of employee, employment status matters.
Board members, if you don't mind me just making two quick comments. First, thank you to Cynthia Swart for the outstanding work she and Colleen Nessam did in putting together this year's extra credit accord contract. You might see a name on there that is kind of hard to see in terms of retirement. Can you tell us a little bit about who's gonna speak to that? Oh, Brian.
Yeah.
What's this news been heard?
So we have exciting news that Mark Clark is going to be retiring. So Mark has been a school counselor at the high school for thirty-six years. So a great dedication and service to our school district. He's done so much for kids, for families, and for everybody in the district, for staff. He's kind of helped everybody and impacted everyone throughout the district in so many different ways. So, you know, he's been running the job fair, he's been doing scholarship nights, he's been, you know, having meetings with students, planning over and over for many years. And so his connections to universities, his connections to jobs within the community and internships and all of those connections that he's giving to kids on a daily basis is really going to be missed. And so with thirty-six years, you know, he's a guy that, you know, he being new last year into the district, you know, coming in and giving perspective and, you know, history, he's got all of the files from everything, if you couldn't find it, he's got it. So all of those things will really be missed within the district. So he's been a great asset, so it's a celebration of his service, for sure.
I still have a feeling he's gonna stay in it with the kids and the families, he does that kind of thing, so. Thank you.
Yeah.
And I'm so excited to introduce to you a new name to the Viking family. I'm referring to Cody Lundquist. Cody and his beautiful family are here tonight. Good evening, Cody.
Hello.
Who are these beautiful people?
This is my son, Soren, and my wife, Wesley.
We're so happy to have you here tonight, and we're recommending Cody as our next high school principal. Cody was absolutely head and shoulders above all of the candidates with whom we've had the pleasure to interview. It was an extensive process, but one that netted us somebody who I think is going to help us go to breakthrough levels. And so we're so grateful to have you join our family. We have a lot to learn from you, and I'm confident we're gonna be doing some great things under your leadership. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you so much, I'm really excited. Welcome.
Jeff, second by the end, any discussion? All those of your say hi.
Aye.
For both.
Will you come back to school with Dan on May second? We're gonna have a reception for Cody and his family at three thirty in the afternoon. We'll have some cookies and some milk and some goodies. For everybody to have a chance to say hello to Cody from the high school, all are welcome to attend, and I'll put that in the board recap.
Alright, Pete, moving on to six consent agenda.
I hate to interrupt again, Board President Lipska, but I'm excited just to bring reference to one topic that is in the consent agenda announcements for this week, and that happens to do with a very generous donation that is being made to the Mount Auburn area school district. It comes from our family foundation, and this is going to be, I think, an opportunity for us to blaze new trails in our science program. We've now had about twenty-nine years our very own biotech program. But wouldn't it be great to have a biotech lab? And that's exactly what this does. We'll be receiving about fifty thousand dollars pending your approval to have one of the area high schools' first biotech labs. And I think actually in the state of Wisconsin, I want to double check that before we take it to the bank. This comes from a very generous family, has long been supporters of our school district, and we're asking for your thoughtful consideration to accepting this donation.
Second.
Should I guess, I click by any discussion? For both.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to seven A, five-year instructional technology plan update, Miss Scott.
Yeah, thank you. Because we have a few technology items on the agenda, from potential Chromebook purchase and action items, to a couple of our fifth grade team members talking about what's happening in fifth grade from parts of our instructional technology plan. I just wanted to give you a brief update of where we are and where we are purchasing, because it was a five-year plan. And the first year actually started last year, the seventeen, eighteen school year. Where we're looking to put our interactive interactive displays at the kindergarten, first grade, and secondary level. We did that, check that off. Phase two was putting in the interactive displays in intermediate seventh grades, three through five. We postponed that just for this past school year, because we wanted to make sure SAC was ready and we just wanted to have that learning time built in for SAC as well. So we actually, I mean, if last year, once the board was purchased, we heard that the board. So those are in route eventually, and those will be put into the I C this summer. So check that one off. So we are looking at actually more the high school English received Chromebooks. So the whole English department now has Chromebook cards for kids to access in those Chromebooks, so check that off our list. And then looking forward, we also checked off our list with the fifth grade team having interactive Chromebooks, as well as new displays in their classrooms. So we are on cast and on target for actually implementing what the plans that we have. It's such a great experience, right? When you put things on paper and you hope it actually lives and breathes, this is breathing. So we're moving forward on it. Our next step then is to look at the high school. At the high school, every classroom will have a new display, whether it's interactive or regular big old TV screen. So we're actually gonna be ahead of our plan, which is nice. We have the goal of just doing that new steam area, two-story edition area over this nineteen forty school year over this summer. But we're actually able to put in and remodel classrooms as well. So the whole building will be new, so we'll actually be ahead, which is neat. And then for the Chromebook piece, we'll be adding Chromebooks into all social studies classrooms at that high school level, and then moving up our Chromebook model that the fifth grade team will share to our sixth grade classrooms next year, as well as putting new displays in the sixth grade. So I'm pretty proud of the team. We want to thank you guys, because we couldn't do this if we wouldn't have added the extra twenty-five thousand two years ago, and then into this last school year budget as well. So your support is making all of this happen. So we want to show you what's happening. That sound good? You have any questions about the plan itself? We will do this plan last, right? So I just wanted to put it in the board packet again. Refresher, there has been no changes, we have what we are, how it's set, which is nice.
Are these samples to look at?
So you're gonna be using them, so yeah. So I'm gonna close this up, I've restocked three for now, because you're gonna be acting as students. So I'm gonna grab my laptop and hook it up to work after so I know those. And we'll get started in like thirty seconds. Thank goodness to you.
Want to sit here?
There's neither space.
Who are your amazing assistants here?
That means why you're so. Whenever I send out a call to the fifth grade team, I always get many, many responses, which is awesome, because they're a great team. So here I'm signing our fifth grade team today, so listen to your bossy. So they're gonna be the representatives for the fifth grade crew. What we're gonna be doing is, once this votes, is, like I said, you're gonna be the students. So we want you to actively engage in some of the platforms or applications that our kiddos are using, so you can just see what's happening in the classroom. Because we have pictures and student work as well, but it's nice to do, right? Taking a while to load, it's still moving, here we go. Okay, so what I'm gonna ask you to do, whether you have one of our Chromebooks, so there's three of them here, or you can use your own device as well. What you're gonna be doing is going to joinpd.com. So if I gave you a Chromebook, it's already there, if you want to use your own device, if you can go to joinpd.com. And then once you're there, you would enter D R H S Y. So what this is, this is an application called CareBack. It's an interactive PowerPoint, really, where students can interact and stay on pace with what the teacher is presenting. So so far, we have two students who are connected. Is that Wi-Fi working today?
Isn't supposed to go to.
Okay, Melissa already walking around, checking students.
Hey Sarah. Quick answer.
Yeah.
Point to us.
Yeah, yeah, click on, click on my. Okay, so are you pointing? So if you have an interactive Chromebook, you can, you can touch it, or you can just click it, whatever you prefer. It feels good for Monday evening.
Is my paper? Yeah, we have to celebrate our technological accomplishments.
Okay, so you're sharing, okay, waiting like for more than three people, I think that's all, because you're sharing. Okay, someone's. You okay now?
I'm all good. For now.
Okay. So here's our traditional PowerPoint that we have here. Okay, keep moving for time. So this image should now appear on your screen. So some clear theories regarding your understanding of technology integration. Where are you? Are you smiley face? Are you neutral? Are you extorter? Are you really er? And your feelings and understandings of technology integration, how you are. This is like really classroom. I feel like that is just great classroom.
Are they just touch? Yeah, these are touch.
That's good.
Oh, I already, but this is.
Feels good, do you smile like faces?
When I give it, okay.
So it's nice, and now we can show, wow, he can show.
He's not happy.
I didn't know my work was going to be.
So it's anonymous right now, which is nice. So overall, we're on the left side more constantly, it's awesome. We have Rod, right, sign his name, of course. Okay, so we're gonna hide those responses from now on, people. Thank you for that, for humoring me, you know, humor us again. What do you want to know about today's topic? It's the next piece, so hopefully you have a place where you can type a response. What would you like to know? We are gonna hopefully leave in these questions and show examples and hopefully answer the questions by the time the presentation is done. What do you want to know about today's topic, Mr. Price? I have about fifteen more seconds, please.
The pressure. Thank you, we'll put you in our board recap.
Happy with one question? We'll start sharing in five, four, three, two, and one. Okay, let's see what we got for responses. So how does improve student learning? We'll talk about that engagement piece, and we'll talk about some assessment piece. This is so cool, how many characters can I type? You have, you have these kiddos every day in our classroom, so perfect. And you get any more? Perfect. You get, the students are gonna take their phones home, what if they try this? So there's another question we have. So yeah, we'll be able to answer all these questions, okay? Okay, so within our time with you, we're gonna talk about our learning journey from visits and trainings all the way to today. Talk about the logistical pieces that we just experienced, getting everyone on is one piece of it, but that classroom environment, student behavior, student management, all that kind of stuff. Technology integration, you'll see some applications, you'll see pictures of student work. Melissa and Channing will show you student work, and then we'll talk about next steps, so where we want to go.
Let's be still, right?
Okay, yeah. So our learning journey, back in two thousand and eighteen, so fifteen months ago, we were fortunate enough to hop on a Madison School District cohort. Madison schools have been integrating one-to-one devices with their elementary kiddles for a couple of years now. Each school is at a different point. So certain schools, we went to Eagle Elementary and Storland Elementary. Certain schools will host other schools who are thinking of hopping onto that, and teachers will spend a half a day at each school. They'll see what kids are doing, they'll see how the classroom's set up, they'll see how things are managed. And we were fortunate, they made great timing, hop onto one of the Madison cohorts and see how this is really implemented and integrated. So there's an example of the cohort of teachers of the Madison schools, and we're just the Mount Auburn school. We can see how the kids are interacting with the interactive Chromebooks. We could look at the management piece and how teachers use their classroom TVs and displays or doc cameras and that kind of thing. We also talked about student management, and that's the Eagle hug, where kiddos are taught how to carry their Chromebooks in a hug, so they don't fall.
May I ask you?
Yeah.
So is this what students would be seeing? I mean, they would, they would see this in addition to whatever you're projecting or not on the board, is that right?
Yeah.
Well, that's awesome.
And they can't go ahead, right?
I can try.
Yep, and so. So the key goes in the back, because of the gate is the kid on the front. And the teacher can walk around and see everything on the screen at the same time, and kids aren't off in ESPN or other places.
That's one of the cool things about the Chromebooks that we purchased for us. The ones that Sarah brought tonight, they're flip screens, so you can flip them over, and they become interactive like a tablet. So when we are teaching, like Sarah said, we can meander about the room, we can be writing the slang and moving the lesson forward, while we're also checking in with the students in the front and the back.
What's the quote?
Good question. If the kids aren't stuck on this tab, they can move on to new tab?
Correct, there is some accountability for it though, so. Our learning journey, since creating our bio-technical technology plan.
So we started in August, we met with a CC two trainer, Beth Clark. And we came in with our Chromebooks, really excited to get started with everything. And she kind of broke down from the beginning like the logistics of how it would look in our classroom. And the main thing I think we took away from that August training was just how like classroom management and common language and how to care for it and coming up with a contract that kids are going to be following and that all of us on the team, there's 10 of us this year, we're going to be following the same type of rules or, you know, mandating certain things that were going to be allowed and not allowed. So that was a really beneficial first meeting because when you get it, you don't really know where to start, so.
And I think it's such a different way of teaching. It's so different from the way, this is my 21st year. So it's, and some of the team members that are teaching this year have been there even longer. So it's just kind of learning this new way of really being much more mobile and up and around. And we're interacting more too. It's not just us standing in front of our smart board in front of the class. We're walking around. And there are just things, things we didn't consider that we kind of had to be a little more aware of, like students who might want to open a new tab while we're presenting. So, you know, just thinking on our feet and how are we going to handle those situations.
So through the year so far, she met with us three times. A lot of the, the other two times that she came, we got a ton of like resources, applications to use, websites, just some cool like already named templates that other districts and teachers had created or where to go those things. So Melissa and I were talking about how the Google Summit that we got sent to, I went in November and Melissa just went in March, that it was kind of the same thing where you just kind of get thrown all these awesome things, technology-based things that you can then go back and try in your classroom.
Want to give this the team props because the session two in September, we came in on a Saturday. So it helps save sub-costs and things like that, so it's a legal Saturday to work with us, so.
We made sure it was a bad Saturday.
Or a bad Saturday, well, it's a Sunday. We were very, very thoughtful in our Saturday choice, so.
So there's, there's been a lot of learning and training. I mean, we, in all of these sessions, we probably, every time, walked away with, I don't know, 25 different things that we could try. So it's kind of narrowing in our focus and saying, okay, I'm going to commit to these two or these three things, and I'm going to try them next week, or I'm going to try them tomorrow with the kids.
And I think something that our team has done really well is if some of us are more comfortable in one area, we'll create those certain activities and then share them with the rest of the team and train the rest of the team so that everyone feels comfortable using them. So it's Valentine team collaboration, which is kind of really helpful too.
So one piece that when we first started talking about, hey guys, I've got this idea. Hey guys, we're going to use interactive Chromebooks. I'm really excited. And like, the eyes get big and all the questions. Here's an example of like the runny list of questions that they had right at the beginning, whether it was the August training or even back last spring. And I think we answered all these questions. And you guys tackled them right away with the kids. So there's a lot to think about as we implement this, and this team has been amazing. Going to start with this with a better team, so. I should get that props because there's a lot of questions they had to answer throughout the process.
So this is how our Chromebooks are stored in our room. That was like a big conversation that we had this summer, what we wanted that to look like. They're on our outside counter in our classrooms. And we put, it's 12 and 12. 12 and 12, so they're separated, but we wanted to make sure that they were kind of on different ends of the room so that you could get all 24 kids going to get their Chromebook at the same time. They're numbered. I think Sarah did all that for us and numbered the Chromebooks. So they have their specific slots that they know that if the charge cord comes out from the back, so it can't get tangled in the front. So it's, it looks really nice and neat.
It still looks like that.
Yeah. It still looks like that even, you know, probably isn't now, so.
And we added, on this picture on the right, there's a little pocket, and students made a card with their name on it. So we thought maybe if a substitute teacher was in the room and a Chromebook was open, the substitute teacher could read that. It was a way for students to kind of personalize the Chromebook for the year.
And once it's personalized, they're accountable to it. They'll take better care of it. It's not just a universal Chromebook and a cart they pull in and pull out or raising some, some damage when that happens. But we haven't had one broken this year. So it's pretty amazing for 10, 11-year-olds, so.
This was one of the things we started creating that first meeting with Beth, I believe, just kind of bringing out how to be respectful, responsible, and ready when using the Chromebook. We tweaked it a little bit after talking with our students that first week of school. And then we, everybody sent it home. There was a spot for students to sign, a spot for parents to sign, and a spot for the teachers to sign. So it, it became kind of a contract. We also have a poster of this. We had it posted in our classrooms. We've talked about maybe revamping it a little bit, making it, making a more kid-friendly poster, but probably keeping this as the contract.
So this, we're playing Kahoot in this picture, which is an interactive game essentially that teachers can create based on the curriculum. So there'll be a screen that our, will come up with a question on the big TV screen. And then on their screen will be the colored answers. So they have to pick the correct one. And then there's like a leaderboard, and they can make silly usernames. So it's just a fun way that kids kind of showing their thinking to it gives you results so you know, you know how we did on the questions and things like that, just a quick assessment of how the class is going that day.
Can you guys talk about casting as well? What that looks like and what it's like? What, if this was a really big TV, how that could look like?
So Chromecasting, it's super easy once you get it figured out. So generally, I'll start Chromecasting, but if someone's going to work on a computer that I want them to show, then it's just a quick click and then they can cast up the screen. So now everyone sees what's on your screen. So that's, and all the kids know how to do it. It's a way that we present things. They don't have to share something with me and then have to log in and accept it and project it onto the screen. They can just be from their desk screen and Chromecast their project.
So like, when I'm teaching a math lesson, for example, if we're doing some mental math in these classes or some kind of warm-up activity, they use an interactive whiteboard right now. And maybe we're finding equivalent fractions or something. And I'll give them 3/4ths and say, find 3 equivalent fractions. And I'll say, Jack, will you cast, please? And Jack will cast his answers up there. We'll, we'll log into the screen and he'll talk to us about why the 3 fractions he has written are equivalent to 3/4ths. So it gives them an opportunity to teach us and to show a thing to. Most of them love it. Some of, you know, there are some kids who, and I say, you know, Jack, will you cast? He might say, I'm not ready today. So, and, and part of that is, again, me being more than checking in with certain students who might feel a little, a little more shy about their answers and making sure that, you know, your answer is correct. So go ahead, this is your chance. It's your time to shine.
Also stand pass as well.
And it also helps them stand pass.
Yeah.
Knowing that they might be called to cast whatever is on their screen. And sometimes they might not have the right thing on their screen and then there's another conversation.
So some of the things that I team-teach with Kathy Johnson. These are just some lingo-type things that we use in our room. So like when I say it, the kids know it. Shark it. It's something that we actually learned from Beth. It's where you just slightly close your screen and then you turn it to your partner that's next to you or some of the desk mate, so that's hands off. Aren't talking now. We're not looking at our Chromebook. So they just know it, and it works really well. Tech ninjas, we, it's, we still have classroom jobs in 5th grade. So those are like our groupery people that are going to check to make sure the Chromebooks are plugged in each night and make sure that if anyone has like a question about something, you can ask the tech ninja to maybe fix it or try it. So kids always learn that job. And then something that Beth really pushed was random history checks. And that's just that accountability, making sure that kids are on task when they're supposed to be. And we just check the history. And they might just pull a stick and say, okay, Henry's returned, I'm going to do a history check. And they know that if your history is deleted, that that means, hmm, maybe I was doing something I shouldn't have been doing. So they know those are coming, trying to continue to teach that this is a tool, a learning tool, not a toy. So just some things that we use in our room.
So these are some pictures of students using the Chromebooks. And I think in this middle picture, you can see one of our display screens. So this was in mine and Pam Stensel's classroom. We have our wall open here, and we have two students presenting Southeast State Project here. And then my screen is over here. So what they're casting from their Chromebooks is being displayed onto both screens. So students in both of our classrooms can watch the presentation. And then they, and again, it's an interactive touchscreen from their Chromebook. So they're just moving along the presentation as we watch it on the screen. It's pretty cool.
A lot of our, you know, typical projects that maybe were done on paper and pencil or required printing are now being done on Google applications. So Melissa Ward Look is working on a Google chain web there. There's a Google Classroom in the bottom right. It has some like blogging aspects to it. So a question was posted, the student can respond. They can comment back and forth on each other. I think the top one is showing the touchscreen, how you can use even a pencil on it and it will write. So I think there you can hear that kind of one.
These were some examples that we thought you might find interesting. So you go ahead and.
So this is, we just started starting our Currys Hill unit so in 5th grade. So this is just a little bit diagram that we did for the three of us versus a true story that a student did for us.
Kids love Flutrid.
It's a really neat app, our website. But Molly Fulmer, this is in her room where she's having kids check their fluency. So she sends out an assignment and they read from a book. And so it's just a student reading, and then you can check it and comment on it. This is an example of that food chain, food web that the students did. And it's not showing up on the board, but there's more discussion and comments.
So the student created that.
Yeah.
So to the question, are students learning? This is, these are great examples of that, isn't it?
I feel like not only are they learning the content, but they're also learning that technological piece and then the presentation piece, making it public.
This is an example of student collaboration where we read a story about America's First Cowboys, and they had to take notes. On the left-hand side of the screen, the students had to like identify the informational text features and explain why they saw them or what they saw and why they were there. And then there was some comprehension-type teaching questions that they worked together to do that. So they each were working on separate devices put together on the same desktop.
And I pointed out the project that some of the students in my class were sharing. This is an example of one of the projects that Freya and Eleanor created. The kids are not only casting these and presenting them to 44 other of their peers, but they're also including things. We had time to go through some of it. They're including, they're including videos. They're citing their work. It's, it's pretty incredible, all the stuff that's going into something like that. And Shani mentioned posting and responding to different questions. So you're, we can kind of create like this interactive classroom, this, this discussion that can happen within the school walls or it can happen when they're at home. For this one, I posted a question, in which Midwest state would you prefer to live in, why? After we had done some research about Midwest states. Sarah, if you click on posting and replying to a discussion.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I told you to click on that. But that was my rubric, that you didn't need that. Click on the, if you go up to.
Student answers.
In which. Yes, click on student answers. Try that. Toward the top. So, so here, Addie posted, I would prefer to live in Minnesota because in Minnesota, there should be a. But, so she answered the question. And then if you click on replies, then you can see that some of her classmates are replying to her, asking her questions. So I mean, it could continue on and on. And I, you know, actually ended up having to stop it because, but this was something, a way for them to interact and have a discussion, even though we weren't having that face-to-face discussion.
And like, they.
Well, there's, there's value in that face-to-face discussion, obviously. But we don't always have the time to do it, and we can't always. I might have to just talk to Mia every time I want to have that conversation. So it was kind of fun. And then there, there are some other ways you can do it. Kid blog, you know, Molly Fulmer is doing kid blog. That was within.
Flipgrid.
Flipgrid.
This is a video. And kids can respond to their videos.
This is another thing that Mrs. Stensel and I have been doing. We've been doing kind of an interactive assignment notebook, and it's posted in Google Classroom. Students have access to it. Parents have access to it. You know, inevitably, we get that question. Ah, I wasn't at school yesterday, what did I miss? Well, go to your assignment notebook. Oftentimes, we try to link some different things in there if we feel like it's necessary. But this is what's due tomorrow in case.
Just like coming to 5th grade, like all these hours, they're really student examples. And I always like the phrase, you gotta go slow to go fast. So like, you start, and it might not have worked out the way you want it to the first time, but a lot of just kind of learning. And the kids know too that, you know, it's a learning year. We keep telling them, you're kind of a rainy day, so we're going to try things. So some things work, some things don't. You just have to find that, you know, that classroom management, you know, that when you're making a comment on someone, that's not like, oh, this is a cool dude or whatever.
Right, you have a long discussion about that.
About what's appropriate when you're blogging and responding to people's work, so.
So this is an example of an exit ticket. Did you want them to try? Okay. So let's start there. Let the, so if you please click on math lesson exit ticket. You guys want to talk about how you use them, right? So when I teach math. At the end of the math lesson, this is a nice way to get a gauge on. Well, now that you're different.
This isn't fair.
Who wonders? It's a nice way to get a gauge on who understood what we did and who still might need another refresher. Answer these as honestly.
But there's only two.
Yeah.
So this is Google form. So this is Google form. I think we...
This is my final answer.
All right. Locked in my final answer. So Josh and I are in like a really awesome meeting and sharing them.
So now we're gonna take a quick look at the results from this exit ticket. So normally, I might just have this portion up on my screen. If I'm real concerned, I see that somebody was really struggling with it and got a zero. So I'll definitely touch base with that person as soon as I can, you know, hopefully during the work time that day. I probably will touch base with the person who got a one or the couple of people who got a one as well and just review the lesson. Can you do me a favor? Sarah, can you go to the exit ticket that I... Presentation? Just because I want to show you... So this is an exit ticket that I used today. We were looking at volume of right quizzes. If you scroll down, just a sec. So one thing we just learned a little bit further, Sarah.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, right here. So when I was at Google Summit recently this spring, we learned that these Google forms can now be locked. So we've got locked mode, which means, and this is in the beta testing stage, it means that once the students open up this Google form, they can't be going to other websites to maybe get a calculator up and do the multiplication or...
Answer.
Exactly. So Josh Cataldo and Will were great about pushing that out to us. So now we have the locked mode for these quizzes, which is pretty cool. But if you go to the responses, similarly, I would take a quick look. I see that most kids got a two, so there's maybe something that I missed that I need to go back and reteach tomorrow. And I definitely check in with those kids who got the ones.
And the class really loves seeing, like obviously we wouldn't show them who got what, but like the bar graph, they love seeing that.
How that changes.
Yeah, how many kids got threes, you know? And it's kind of like that competition aspect. They don't know who did, but just how the class did.
And then you guys can see where the error in understanding was. I didn't get a specific number.
Number two.
Yeah, trying to...
Yeah.
Gotta reteach that.
So next steps for this year, so you... A management piece, logistics piece, the teaching piece. People answer the engagement or how does it change learning question I think we had at the evening. But how is this gonna continue to roll as we move forward? So they are cohort one, they're gonna be in year two next year. So they're gonna continue to use and refine these apps that they're exploring and learning. But we're also gonna integrate what's called the SAMR model. Right now, because this is so new for the staff, they're more in the enhancement phases where they're substituting technology. Like I think you guys mentioned that Google Paint for the habitats or the food chain, that's more of a substitution piece than augmenting piece. How do we push our instructional technology further to start modifying and redefining what we do? So that's what we're gonna talk about with the fifth grade crew next school year. But then now, we're gonna bring cohort two. And they're gonna be in year one next year. So that's our sixth grade crew with some applied arts folks, high school English and high school social studies. So we'll go through a modified version, you guys were getting fixed too, a modified version of what the fifth grade crew went through.
So can I ask a question? I mean, this is incredibly engaging. And does the engagement, are you finding that the engagement sticks? Or are, as time goes on, this becomes more or less routine? I would think that it's incredibly engaging all along.
I would say that the kiddos have really been engaged. They're very excited when it's a new project to start. One thing that we've been kind of going back and forth with that screen time...
Finding the balance.
The balance of it.
Sure.
Because we know that chances are, if we have them on the screen all day, they're going home and they're on the screen as well. So we do try to find a balance between that and take breaks and do some kind of body movement type breaks and things like that.
Send them up for reasons. So you can't stay in a time computer go play.
So, but no, I think they're always looking for new ways and teaching us things, "Hey, look at what I figured out how to do on the Chromebook."
And the cool thing is, we're learning so much. You know, we still, I was just thinking about when you were projecting my slides there, I was just thinking about some things that we had learned at Google Summit. One cool thing was creating an adventure story for the students. So I'm thinking about trying to start some of that kind of stuff, which I had never done before, or doing some coding, but making a storytelling coding. So integrating language arts and coding and the technology. It's all really exciting. I feel like we are energized and engaged, so I think that the kids kind of feed off that energy.
Sure.
I have a question. So are you really doing anything on paper in your classrooms at this point? Is it all...
Well, now...
I guess percentage-wise, would you say how much of your teaching is happening on a device versus how much is happening in...
Well, just for math specifically, I would say probably, probably 20% of math is on the device. We still have our math journal that we do writing in every day. We still have a study link every day. I don't know, but a lot of our...
I think the writing, language arts piece is a lot more of a... It's a lot easier when students are, you know, when I write a paper, I just go to the computer and type it. I don't write the rough draft. So that's still an option for kids if they want to, but it makes editing a lot easier. So a lot of kids can just, you know, that was kind of a learning thing too this year. I don't think that I can write my rough draft without typing it. Nope, if that's what you wanna do. So it's kind of, we've kind of been figuring that balance out a little bit. I think it varies from classroom to classroom and team to team.
And subject area.
Yeah, and subject area, what we're comfortable with.
I think there's, thankfully, we all remember the old way. So if a student happens to not be able to use his or her Chromebook that day, then, you know, we're able to say, "Oh, well, great, here's the paper and..." And, "Garnet, I can do it on paper today instead of using my Chromebook."
I do feel like the Chromebook tool has really helped differentiate for students too, that maybe that extra support in some areas or the students that are going above and beyond and that's letting them to be able to push and go further.
I agree.
So another question I had is, are you guys going to be getting feedback from the kids in any kind of structured way at the end of the year? It just seems to me like with this particular group, this would be a good opportunity because they've got the frame of reference of what's happening this year, but they also, in a pretty recent past, have a frame of reference for what they did last year. And just to ask them, you know, some specific, get some specific answers to some specific questions about, you know, just kind of how they feel about this.
That's a good idea. I don't know if Google is ever...
I believe the pre-team, the pre-team is often just on Tuesdays and Fridays, I'm trying to agenda on it.
Maybe a Google form.
Start doing that.
Yeah. I think too, with another thing to do with the reading component, with our Journeys curriculum, there's an online component to it that kids can access now. And so students that maybe struggle with reading, and right there, there's a textbook on their screen and it's being read to them. And I still give that choice, like either Partner Read, Peddrate, or use a Chromebook. And a lot of kids still wanna read the book, but there's a lot of kids that like reading it off the screen too.
And in the past, we could do that. We had Chromebooks available, but we had to check out the cart. So what this has done has really kind of opened things up. We don't have to worry, you know, "Do I have enough Chromebooks for everyone?". We've got them there, we can use them whenever we need to. So, I mean, I just think it's been, I think it's been a lot of fun this year. Like I said, I feel like we're excited and energized and we have been throughout the process. So it's been a great experience for me personally.
Yeah, for sure.
I think for our whole team.
And at the end, we just have a couple of Chromebook teachers actually about where they are in the process and how they feel, how the years gone through, so I'm just looking through. I see, I only caught a couple of the quotes, but I saw a lot of, "I love, a crowd, energized", those kinds of ideas. So even from the fifth grade team, it's been a great journey.
Any other questions? I think one we didn't answer was about Chromebooks going home. Right? That's one.
Additional one, but...
Okay. So the Chromebooks don't go home right now. They stay at school. I don't know if there's a plan.
That's how we keep one. As we see our device purchase and usage in the district, we'll start looking at domain management platforms. Right now, we use Google Classroom, but there's more robust platforms out there. But we just don't have enough usage to use it with kiddos, train staff, and however, just like that yet. As kiddo kit holder, looking at more of a one-to-one going home, we're just not there yet. We might be right off full power.
And it's open source software, so kids need to get access to the Google platform at home. They can certainly do that. The vast majority of our families have responded to previous surveys to Bright Lights indicating that they have access to internet and have access to computers at home. So I think this is one way for us to help move the needle in technology at the same time, not overextending ourselves.
Additional question, are there any plans for cohort one to start helping orientate cohort two?
You guys wanna talk about that? Yeah. We got together with the sixth grade teachers and they came over and watched us one day teaching, using the technology in the classrooms. And some of us, we were using Flipgrid, we were...
I think classroom is something different. Like you almost think they planned it.
We didn't, but it was pretty cool and the sixth grade teachers could ask us questions and observe the students doing things. And then after, we got to have a conversation where they got to ask us some questions. We're pretty close with the sixth grade teachers anyway, professionally, personally. So I think anytime they're, you know, gonna need help or have any questions, they can certainly give a reach out.
We put together a little like go-to tools sheet document with links and applications and things we've used with a description and clean on sharing that with them for next year, just what our kids have been exposed to this year and they'll be familiar with next year.
So your expectations contract is gonna be shared, the language is gonna be shared. So we want to be a seamless, we don't want kids to learn these things, so we just want to keep getting better.
So that was kind of one of my questions. So this group of kids, the current fifth grade kids, are they always gonna be with the teachers who are new to the technology? So they're gonna be the ones kinda teaching and teaching? And is that intentional?
As we move up, we want to start with a class cohort, a very low cohort, that could move up and we just train, not the right word, but we train the right way, how to use them, how to care for them. And that's why we've had so much success, I think, with the Chromebooks, because the kids realize it's a tool, it's an expensive tool, and it's a privilege to use. So moving forward from this class on, kids will know how to use this tool appropriately. We don't wanna start as we're experiencing at the high school when we've given them a tool and they're that old, usage isn't quite the same and the care's not quite the same yet. So looking forward as this cohort and stuff and their next crew in next year, fifth grade, just gonna, they'll get it. So it takes some time.
Twenty-one years teaching, all in mode work? Outstanding. And you've got the energy and excitement of a first and second year teacher. I love it. I love to see your face just light up when you start thinking about this and talking about it.
It is when you're learning something new and it's not an exciting, I mean, it's, how can you not light up, right? It's...
And Channing, it's just such a delight to have you be a part of our family. I think you and I are part of the same class. Did we get here the same year?
Yeah.
Yeah. So the things that you've been able to do in a short period of time, really please extend not only our gratitude on behalf of the board to the both of you, but to your colleagues as well, our colleagues as well. Very special people. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Straka Khan.
Thank you. Okay. New app to send the information and advocacy report. Sarah, is your seat eleven?
Yep. Give me a second here. No problem. Yeah, I'll go that way. There's one more. Okay. Transition to information advocacy report. In your board packet, you receive information about percent of seniors meeting the college board recommendations for courses to study and a percent of students who persist beyond the first year and graduate within six years. Within the presentation itself, I took some snippets of that fuller report, most of the, most if not all of the figures and graphs as well. I'm just going to touch on some of my ahas and some of areas where we need to go. So looking at the next slide. So the University of Wisconsin system needs to share out which schools and percentages of students who may need remedial classes when they go off to the university system, the UW system. So I presented the past three years that we have data. We don't have Fall 2018 yet, that Fall report. So the most recent three years are 15, 16, and 17 years. Looking at the data, you can see the numbers and percentages there. So I started scratching my head, as I'm sure you're scratching your head. And so next question is, what do those figures mean? Why are they increasing? Where do we go from here? And that's a question that I'm gonna be bringing back to our math team to talk about as we look at these numbers and figure out how we're gonna make sure it ends up. Two years ago, started talking about improving math curriculum and math resources. So we'll see where that takes us. That is more common core aligned, higher expectations and skills for students. So we'll see if students are getting those skills and being proficient in those skills with this new series and new expectations we have for math. You've also made an investment with personnel. We increased our Math FTE the past two years by 50% position two years ago and we increased that to full-time position this past year. So now we offer intervention for math students now, and we'll see how that also can help us move the needle. So it's gonna take a while though to see how those results can change this as well. So those are a couple of my ahas as we move forward with this.
And English being so small, we don't have the ability...
Yep, so English is a little hard. So in keeping along with that math strain, within your board presentation or within the actual report itself, there were four different post-secondary preparedness areas. I chose to post the math because we're just looking at math for the UW system within Madison College. This is the four-year percentages and numbers of students who are considered prepared or not prepared based on Madison College entrance testing. So again, about the same percentages we're seeing that we saw in the UW system report. We're gonna keep eye on this as we move forward. And switching gears to looking at something called the National Student Clearance Data. So Montcore subscribes to this service as well as many high schools across the state. And within Student Tracker, we can track nationwide post-secondary information for our graduates and where they go, what kind of institution do they go to. For our purposes, I chose to use the four-year and two-year information, but we also receive information on public school versus private school and other ways to look at the data. Within this, you can see within all institutions, the number of students who enroll in college after high school and then the orange line is the two-year and the four-year is the green line. The purple line, the purple line graph at the top, then is that combination. And then we have that red flat line that's just the average of that purple line over Persistence, that was actually, that was one of the goals when you look at some students who persist in the first year. So looking at our persistence data, you can see that overall, our students do persist pretty well moving forward. I believe about 89% of kiddos who start their freshman year persist until their sophomore year. One wonder I had was, and I have to figure out a way how to confirm this, was if we look at that two-year orange institution line, we see some increases and decreases. And my wonder is, do some students who start maybe in a two-year school move on to a four-year? And then do we see that persistence go up in some cases? So we see that sort of mirror opposite effect, especially I'm thinking in 2016, that last one, maybe some students who didn't enter a two-year, like a Madison College, if you get a certain grade point, you can oftentimes move on to the UW system, well, oftentimes maybe Madison. So maybe that's what we're seeing sometimes. And last, looking at that freshman sophomore persistence, again, the most students who earn six years, as we know, even I think for those of us that went to a post-secondary institution, sometimes it takes a little bit longer than others and that's been dragging out sometimes for students. And that's been an issue, I think, in the university system and the university system has sometimes come under fire for how long kids have to be there in order to graduate. So Montcore is at or just below, and I'm gonna do a little research on this area as well, the most students who finish within six years. Some may decide to do maybe a internship or maybe they realize who else to put on and they have another route. I'm just, I'm not quite sold on this data yet, so I wanna dig a little bit deeper. The national averages I had in the report was about 59% of students graduate within four to six years. So that's what I'm scratching my head on. I'm gonna do a little research on it. And I think that's the last slide. Within the report then, you also saw the last figure, where our students are going. And Madison College was number one for our students and then UW Madison would be plus the second highest for students that are going to. That's all I have.
So the national average for... So the national average for completing within six years is fifty-nine percent.
Some may take some years off. And that's where I'd like to do a little more digging is if it's a degree versus maybe some of those who are fully certified, that is, can actually finishing. So I'm just curious as to, that seems all right.
Well, yeah, it does. You're right, just, I'm sure there are a lot of reasons.
I'd like to learn how a little more probably define that a little bit more.
Yeah, and I'd be really curious to see what kinds of institutions have higher rates and what kinds have lower rates.
Dig into the data, will you, come back and let us know what you found.
Next year report will be ready. Yeah, we can find time. Okay, perfect. Maybe even, I'm sure some of our board data workshop, that might be at the appropriate place.
This is great data, great baseline for us to continue monitoring this part of the strategic plan. I think all in all, when you look at where our students' performance is as measured against the state mean, we continue to have a great deal to celebrate. But we should rest on the morals. We should continue to charge ahead and I'm thankful that we have the right team in place to get us there. So thank you for helping us to get there.
Thank you. All right, move on to the information advocacy report. I'm not going to repeat the whole thing.
Board members, as our team starts to come to the table, welcome David and Scott. You may remember last year about this time, we had spent some extensive period of time working on our long-range facility plan. And what we thought we would do tonight is share with you a couple of slide decks based upon projects that were completed by the referendum, possibility referendum projects that could be done yet. And then lastly, items that have, need some attention based upon our local budget. And so, hi Dave, you've been taking pictures lately, haven't you?
Yep.
Where would you like to go first?
Well, I think Scott would like to start the conversation.
Okay. Hi Scott.
Before we go for the picture tour just yet.
So I handed out this particular document. It's hard copy. We have the electronic version on the screen. I was reminded very kindly, as I'm reminded when I'm at finance meetings, that sometimes the information that I print and that I look at tends to be very small and it's more of a habit. So maybe I need to break that habit personally. For some reason, I like to look at smalls. So we would like to break our presentation into three components. First component will be a series of pictures. And that will not only provide an outline of things that we've accomplished, both referendum and out of our operating budget, but then also moving forward, what lies ahead? What are things that we're hoping to do in the upcoming operating budget? And what are things that we're intending to do yet as part of our referendum project? Then the second piece, we'll get into what we call last year, last April, our long-range analysis. Dr. Slaram just had it up on the screen a second ago. That addresses basically the main infrastructure components of each one of our school buildings. And we assigned letter grades to it last year. The intent for tonight is to show a comparison this year of what, how we assign letter grades. And if we've seen an increase, in other words, an improvement in letter grade scores, a decrease, we'll talk about those, or for many of them, remaining flat. And then the last component of our presentation, we'll talk about the buildings and grounds and maintenance operating budget. We have finite dollars that we allocate every year for projects. And that's discussed during the spring and into the summer as the budget relates to the buildings and grounds team when we have our community meetings. And then lastly, as a second sort of tier to that discussion, will be to talk about more long range, you know, four years out, ten years out, all the way up to thirteen years out. We'll talk a little bit about the finance restrictions that we have and the challenges that all school districts take. It's not just not hard when it comes to trying to make sure that our facilities are the places, are in a place that they need to be for quality instruction. So with that, I'm going to hand it to Dave. We're going to take sort of a walk through memory lane of things that we've accomplished and things that we're looking to move forward with over the next year.
Great, so I think, Steve, if you want to start with the local budget projects completed. So over the last year, we've had a number of things that were identified as these would be some great places to spend our local dollars. One of them was to move the backstop back at the request of the baseball coach. We were able to move that backstop back to make it more of a regulation playing field. I would just have done recently. We were able to do a lot to resurfacing and restriping our lots. This is the IC and we kind of split the previous year's budget and the current year's budget and did a lot with all of them last summer. Out of my project budget came building the temporary shops over at the bus garage. So all the walls and the electrical and the collection systems all came out of the local budget. We were able to update our loading dock at the ELC. A pretty nasty bit of blacktop for a while. We were able to start to get a handle on some of the water problems that we had at the ELC. We've added the sluice way there, the little water channel. And then we also waterproofed, kind of made ourselves a little outdoorsy pool down there in the bottom of that area down there. Hopefully, we're going to keep all the water out of the base of the ELC moving forward. We were able to do a little facelift at the Lincoln Street site of the ELC. There used to be terraces there that were impossible to maintain and very unsightly. So we were able to take those out and just make it mobile grass. And a new roof at the district office was also part of last year's local budget. And we were able to restore the gym floor at the IC. Prior to that, it was very yellow and green. It was supposed to be blue underneath there, but the finish was so thick and so old, it was green. So we were able to take it out and let the bare wood come up with new graphics and give it a nice facelift. Able to build a shed, storage shed, that has proven completely invincible this year. We were able to have our visiting football teams change in there. It's going to house a lot of stuff as we, you know, go forward. Evacuating the high school for renovations this summer, there's a lot of stuff that's going to need to live in there for the summer. And my favorite. Shanty towel, because when I fondly refer to that as, that is our covered walkway that connects the building to the modules. I'm starting to see it go.
Well, you've got pictures to remember.
What's that? Pictures of, oh yes, yes, and many sleepless nights of worrying about it to not blow away or crushed by snow. All right, then we can go to the budget projects for the upcoming years to do. There we go. So some of the things that are on my radar, the things to do, the district office is in need of some carpeting interior. Tried to find the worst spot, but that doesn't really do it. It's ancient and needs to be replaced.
Does the upstairs print?
Alit, yeah, it's alit. Some more concrete issues. I'd like to tackle some of our porous concrete this year. It's easy for me to do. I can engage a contractor to do some of that work and I don't really have to do much. That's the backside of the ELC. That's an ankle breaker right there, and I'd love to see that go away.
Looking at maybe using blacktop, right?
Correct. I would like to use blacktop, much like we did the IC. We found that blacktop is wonderful because it melts, you know, the snow and ice melt off it really, really quickly. So I'm looking forward, I've got numbers from local contractors on getting that done. And if, you know, I'll take this to the buildings and grounds and we can approve that and we can get that done this summer, that'd be a big upgrade for that area. And the retention pod at the IC, that needs some serious work. The drain that's in there has been plugged for some number of years. So it's got a lot of sediment in there, so it got filled in. So we've got a plan, we'll probably do that in-house with a backhoe to dig it out and redo that sort of thing. And then turn that back into just a grassy area instead of the cattails it currently is. Yes, more sidewalks at the front side of the PC. That is another ankle breaker. I think that's been brought up. There's a bad one. Those things have got to go. So again, I've got numbers from local contractors. I'm getting those things replaced. And that seems to be my, where my head is headed this summer, to get those sorts of things done.
What is that?
Well, it's a drain tube from the way the building was configured prior to the recent renovation. There was a drain, a storm drain that came and emptied out there and they had to carry the water underneath. It's hot all underneath that metal.
And it's right outside the gym, so when you go for basketball or any event there and you go through that door, you're constantly trying to find the even ground to walk out of.
Yeah, good luck with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it definitely has to go. Ah, we want to fit out the shed. The shed, at the end, one of the plans was to divide it in half. And half of it was going to be a heated storage workspace for my guys. We lost some in the renovation where we keep our snow removal equipment. That would be insulated and heated and that would be a pleasure for my guys to do some work and then also keep our snow removal equipment warm so it starts up with its own level. And then one of the big projects is to restore the aux gym floor. Every year since I've had this seat, I've got requests from Coach Nessie and Colleen Nessie to please, would you be restored this floor? So we're going to get at it this summer. And then some other smaller things, the storage system is in the fire locker room. It's been requested that that get revamped. We've got a new design that, we just turned all that plywood out and put some nice stuff, almost like those roll-up doors that are in the back hallway by the aux gym. And we need to give the football practice field a little bit of love. It's in fairly tough shape. They probably did pretty good. So we're going to top dress that, oversee that, try to get that to be a little bit lusher for the guys to practice on. And yes, we need new windows and siding at the district office. It's also another, sure would be nice to head down the road, get a few of those windows replaced and maybe somewhere in the near future, get the siding replaced as well.
You know, I go outside to shut them?
I could put handles on inside if you want to. No, we can give you sashes and new hardware. It's probably the least intrusive way of doing it because the frames themselves are still in good shape. But the back is perfectly perfect.
So you mentioned the aux gym floor that's being redone this summer. And the bar department's aware of that?
We made, well, as it stands, nobody has access to the high school except for the fitness center at all this summer. So this is our golden opportunity to say, you know what? There's nobody around, let's empty that thing out, let's get it stripped down. Really, the process is pretty quick. The finishers come in and they can have it stripped and sanded and backed. Actually, probably in ten minutes, they're pretty quick at their work. We use water-based polyurethanes these days. It really dries way quicker. So there's not the lifetime between coach and chef. And it's a much harder floor. Yeah, referendum completed would be our next. So this is out of referendum dollars. These are projects that we took on and didn't put under Kramer's umbrella to manage. So we've done quite a bit of carpet replacement here at the middle school. That's the choir room, excuse me, we did the band room. We've done a number of classrooms. We were able to upgrade some of the electrical services at the tech end department. That red button up on the wall is a kill-all switch. So in an emergency, we could slap that switch and every machine in the place shuts off. Added more outlets, better service, a much needed upgrade for repair department. We were able to replace the heating and cooling system here at the middle school. All on referendum dollars under our, you know, project management. That's a picture of the two new boilers that are upstairs. New flooring again, this is the teacher's lounge. We were going to go with carpet there, but the calls said, hey, how about putting vinyl in there? And we were able to swing that and feel for not much of a price change. Much better idea, and we're back to that. So other things that aren't, you could take pictures of, we are still on track to replace the ELC sinks and countertops in every classroom. That's slated to get started right away when school's out. The electrical panels, as part of the referendum, we said we were going to upgrade the electrical distribution system. We've got most of that done. We've got a couple of components that got backwarded. There's not been any downtime, so that may get done right away at the beginning of the, at the beginning of the summer, then we will have that taken care of as well. And we'll get, of course, obviously, the front entrance of this school was also completed. All right, then we move on to the referendum projects that we have yet to do. We have a drainage problem here at this corner of the middle school. We have things contracted to begin that work sometime after May 28. They're going to put some drains in there and run it out around the backside of the building so that bathtub area, as it was referred to, will drain properly and then keep water out of our tech end and gym floor.
You may remember, board members, this is where we had some water seepage into the gymnasium door, oh, maybe a year ago?
It was last year when it had monster rain.
Yeah.
Everything got wet.
Yeah. And so this whole area here is going to be rebuilt.
More drains and then the slope down better. We're going to get the bleachers at the high school gymnasium, the main gym. That is scheduled to begin in May 28. The contractor will remove those bleachers. We'll do a little finishing underneath the bleachers so that the rest of the floor is caught up, some painting behind them. And then they'll be back in first week in June to start installing the new. So along with that, some other things that we're going to do, so we're going to finish. The entire, you guys have approved, OSK has put all carpet in all the roofs. So we will have this entire building done right at the end of the summer, all the carpeting. We also have to consider, we've got bids on doing HEAC upgrades at the ELC. Rebuilding the air handlers and some of the other things, adding controls to the boilers so that we have a notion when the boilers aren't working properly. They'll alert us like all the other systems do. Yeah, I think that's about all of the OSK projects that we have to do over the course of the summer. We have some safety grant stuff as well that's coming up that Brian has left. But we have a number of locks to install, film to put on, cameras to put in, card readers, a lot of security stuff over the course of this next summer.
Two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollar worth of grant dollars that we received to enhance our school security.
Absolutely.
And then you also have put together some possible referendum pictures too, which are really neat.
Right, so things that kind of come up on my radar, if you had more money to spend, what would you spend it on? I'm going to engage a lighting consultant. He's going to come out this Friday and kind of look through the middle school and see if he can come up with a plan to, you know, give us some ideas on what we could do to replace these lights. You can see this is the common top here at the middle school. And with our lots of fluorescent lights at some work, some built, it'd be nice to get that all upgraded to LED. Get some notion of what that would cost, what that would look like. And then we can move forward maybe with, once we have that kind of design in hand. Principal Christensen has asked me numerous occasions, can we do something with the lockers? I went with the, let's do it all. And for roughly a hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars, we can replace all the lockers in this school. Now, I don't know that that's necessary, but let's start the talking there. The eighth grade way, according to Mr. Christensen, is probably the worst shape. So maybe we just replace a third and paint the rest, or do a third this year, a third coming up. So we'll have to see, you know, worth the money life. But that's what it would cost us to replace all the lockers in this building. And of course, we have to tackle the metal roof. We do have specs and designs from PRAE. I have a number of contacts that we met at the WASBO convention who have reached out to me to say, you know, we can see the specs. So we'll give them the specs in their hands and maybe send that out to bid again. Maybe we'll get a more favorable price the next time around.
We, at some point recently, have just said to our staff, if there's any new ideas that are forthcoming, pencils down. Let us start collecting new ideas that people may have. And so we've started developing a spreadsheet that's shared amongst our administrative team. And we all have the charge of whenever someone approaches us and say, hey, have you ever thought about doing this, this, or this? thought about doing this, this, or this? We're putting it in the spreadsheet so that we don't lose track of it and then if there are additional dollars left over, we can then come to the board and say, here are some things that have gained traction, here's some pricing that we've assigned to that, here's what we recommend, what do you think? So we envision that being part of a third phase, if you will, of the referendum that would not happen until probably the summer of 2020 when we look to address the, the steel roof here.
Okay, so, um, I think we go to the long-range analysis document. That one. So this is the document, this is the first page of the hard copy that I passed out prior to the meeting. And as I mentioned earlier, there's two columns in the middle that have some yellow shading. And really what we wanted to do is do a comparison from the letter grades that we assigned to these infrastructure components in 2018 to any potential letter changes, um, up or down, um, for the year 2019. Um, we can certainly touch base on a, on a few larger items and then, you know, we would get, if the board would like to go through each one of the lines that are highlighted, we certainly can do that. I will say on the surface that the dollar amounts that are, um, assigned next to some of the letter grades are an estimate at this point of what it could cost. Now, from a finance point of view, I mentioned this last year and reiterate a little bit more about that we don't have a plan to put approximately eight hundred thousand dollars into the IC in, through our operating budget as the funding mechanism. And so that's important because even though the challenge of fitting it into our operating budget is difficult, we still can't ignore it. We still have to recognize that we have a need. And I, and I pick on the IC roof as one that's in the middle of the screen, but certainly there are others as well. Um, you know, right at the top, you'll see, under the ELC, um, a list of the infrastructure pieces as well as all the other buildings. And you'll see with the ELC roof, uh, we have a letter grade of an F. And as Dave mentioned to me, it's not that we have significant issues with the roof itself, I don't think we have a significant amount of leaking, it's, it's really just the age of the roof itself that, that we have that letter grade last year and we just carried it forward to this year.
That's correct. Yeah, the, 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 uh, the center hub of the building was replaced.
So, something?
Yeah, some, some years ago. So the center hub is in good shape, we, we laid up a new chimney as well, so center section, you know, the, the, the roof on that is in good shape. The wings, I don't have any leaks. You know, it just seems that it, it's, it's just old and I would hate to say that just based on the fact it doesn't have leaks, that it's okay. You know, so, you know, it's just, it's just outlived its usefulness, I'm sure.
And see the other items with the exception of hard surfaces, the last item under the ELC, um, we've seen increases in letter grades from C to B, um, F to C and so forth. And really that's the, the work that Dave and his team have done, um, getting that building a little bit more up to speed using some of the referendum dollars that were allocated. But again, when it comes to ELC items, those are, those are managed directly by Dave and his team. Kramer has nothing about, um, with these pieces. Um, I do want to point out one item on the hard surfaces, we kept the letter grade the same. However, we do know that we will be making some increases as they, improvements as they mentioned with some of the sidewalks. Jeff, you and I have had a number of conversations about that, so I wanted to highlight that. Even though we didn't improve the letter grade, um, I think that next year at this time, you know, we'll be able to see a change when we, uh, add it there.
The newer part of that sidewalk in the back, that was put in in 2003, summer. And the old one, oh, that's probably sixty-seven, so.
Yeah, it's already gone.
Um, the PC, you'll see, we have, you know, virtually A's across the board. You know, obviously we have some of our surfaces work that, that Dave talked about earlier. The IC, the major piece, um, as you'll see, is, is the roof. Um, you know, we give a letter grade of a C. Um, in terms of, you know, useful life, I think there's still, as Dave shared with me, a few years left. However, we do have some leaking issues. And in my opinion, and I, you know, you guys know I'm not a contractor, I don't have experience in it, what I know is that for roof is leaking, there's an issue, right? We gotta do something, we can't just let it go. Right, Dave?
That's correct. Um, my estimation, my estimation that the, the membrane doesn't leak is flashy issues. So where penetrations come through the roof, where the roof meets the, the sidewalls, that's where we're having the leaks. I don't think I have any leaks in the membrane itself, but they do need to be addressed without help.
So you see, you'll see later on, um, with the corresponding pages that we start to take that eight hundred thousand dollar projected roof cost for the IC and we forecast out putting dollars aside each and every year out of our operating budget to try to accomplish that. Well, you'll find there's one, it takes many, many years when you put away a small dollar amount to get to eight hundred thousand dollars. And certainly that's less dollars than each and every year that we could be doing something else with. The next item, um, is the middle school. Again, we've had some improvements as, as Dave's shown in, in some of the pictures. You'll see that the roof, we actually downgraded it just slightly only because we found some water issues that we had, certainly with that big rainstorm that sort of highlighted some of the issues, um, back in, back in the summer.
Did I understand you correctly, Dave, that Gray has done some work to spec out the metal?
Yeah, we've actually had, we've had the metal roof out to bid once already and the numbers didn't come back. They came back significantly higher than what we expected and we thought maybe we had missed the window of opportunity, uh, and we want to, you know, be kind of ahead of the curve this, this time around, so we'll probably send those out to bid sometime this fall as opposed to, you know, back in the spring.
Right, okay.
I do want to point out that both for the middle school specifically and the high school, once we get some work accomplished this summer and fall with referendum dollars, what's remaining that we need to do, we'll see letter grade improvements, um, so we'll get better scores on some of those areas. Um, but high school, boy, you got a lot of work going on there. You'll see, I'll just point out a couple of major pieces here, you'll see that plumbing, um, you know, we're projecting it, uh, an increase from a D minus to an A. Um, and also with hard surfaces, you know, I don't know, we're adding parking spaces, but the entire perimeter of that building will have new, new pavement and that will be significant. You'll recall the condition of that pavement, pavement just in the back of the building, yet alone, you know, the front of the building, but the back of the building obviously is the vast majority of it is now building, but nevertheless, um, we'll, we'll remain as hard surfaces and new spaces will have, you know, brand new pavement.
Are any of the restrooms being touched by the, the renovation work?
The referen, the, the restrooms. So, there's restrooms, there's, there's, just the restrooms in the 600 wing that are nineteen ninety-seven vintage, no. There is a bathroom that's near the, um, auditorium, nineteen ninety-seven vintage. I am going to, I, I'm entertaining prices on new, uh, partitions in there and we'll paint the thing so it looks like all the rest of the bathroom. So in that regard, yes, and then the main bathroom in the 200 wing was renovated a couple, three, four, five years ago, something like that.
Three years ago.
Yeah.
So most of, most of the, the plumbing that's referenced in the document is, is in the addition.
Though the plumbing that's being, the plumbing that really got it to D was the original domestic water plumbing that's in the tunnels.
I get you.
As part of the referendum scope, you know, expansion, we said, hey, can we do the, all the new domestic water nets? That's what's gonna turn that into an A.
Okay, thank you.
The bus garage, um, clearly new building yet, although kind of swatted. The thing that Dave has been talking about a lot with transportation is trying to find a means in which to expand some parking areas. If you've been around that building and kind of a, a routes, you'll see that, you know, we're pretty, it gets filled quickly with all the drivers and employees that we have out doing, um, routes and so forth. And so we have people parking on the road. So is it catastrophic by all means, no, but certainly, you know, potentially going to stay at that road. And then the last one is the district office, and I'm not really sure where to begin there, um, other than, you know, I think we're very conscientious of wanting to stick a lot of money in, um, but yet we know we need to stick some dollars just to maintain what we have. And so, um, whether it's the, you know, making sure that we don't have to go outside with closed window in the summer when the window's open, um, giving it a better appearance when we have people walking through our district office. You know, I still, um, when I go to meetings around the area and I go to other district offices, you can imagine, you know, what they look like. And certainly that's a face of our district, um, but in a lot of ways it's not. Our school buildings aren't. And so, um, even though we work out of the district office, I think we're proud to say that we're sticking our money in the right place. But nevertheless, you know, there's some, there's some changes that we could make. HVAC is one that we downgraded from a C to a B only because I know the air quality is just not quite where we look for it to be.
No, it is, it is a district-owned property that we are, you know, we should pay pay to get off the big fault of the roof. We'll put some money in there, somewhere along the line is gonna be important.
So I hope you found this valuable. You know, last year was our first year to do this information advocacy report related to our strategic plan. We kept that column, like I said, in there from 2018. We wanted to have that 2019. I'd like to, again, add a 2020 next year and really start to see a comparison, not only to remind us of the progress that we're making, but also to really emphasize the things that we need to, to continue to focus on. Um, the, the next page, um, is called the capital maintenance plan. And really what separates this document from the following two documents in your packet is that this is our intent to accomplish some of the needs that we addressed in Dave's building and grounds budget that he has each and every year. So we've been pretty consistent in keeping our hundred and thirty thousand dollar, um, budget for Dave to accomplish projects. Now, he has a wide variety of other line ends in his budget to accomplish other things, but specific to projects, we, we isolated a line end for that so we can recognize needs that we have. And so the purpose of this is to not only show you what the projected 2019, 20 budget would be for buildings and grounds, but then starting to forecast out what the next three years beyond that could look like. Certainly it's a hatched in stone and it needs, if it's a working document that's useful, it needs to, you know, it needs to be changed from time to time as things come up. Um, Dave and his team do a remarkable job working together, not only determining what are the needs for next year, but then starting to think, you know, two, three years out. Because decisions, as you know, that we make now and decisions that we make this upcoming school year will have an impact on things that need to be done in the following year and so on. And so certainly we'd be happy to answer any questions about this. We can bring back the buildings and grounds as well to talk about any details. But again, it's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, Dan, sorry.
Oh, it was, sorry, that was a standard question.
I saw.
For your primary center concrete plan on the sidewalk, does that also include the steps up at the back gym, the one that seems to crumble under spring?
Yeah, that, that's, that's such a small little portion of that that, you know, that is certainly on my radar. I have, actually I have a work request in the system to, to get that done. It's just finding the time for that thing, you know. No, it, it is in terrible shape, I get you. Yep, absolutely.
If we switch to LED lighting, do we get any full fabric rebates or anything?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's still, um, focus on energy rebates and stuff and that's part of having a consultant come out. If we do this, uh, our focus on energy guide, there's, there's always rebates, incentives for, for doing those sorts of upgrades. All of the, all of the switchovers of the, um, the cooling system, the HD system, those all come with a rebate attached to it.
Okay.
You mentioned setting aside money for that eight hundred thousand dollar IC roof. That, that would not be, that would not come out of this.
Correct, correct. And so, um, the intent is to, for 48, there's a 48.
Thank you.
Um, the intent for the first few years was just to show, yep, just out of this operating budget, here's what we know we can do. Um, great question. And then the next two documents that you have in your packet that have sort of a blue label on the top, which is years four through eight and then nine through thirteen, um, that's where we're showing if we have to put money aside in our operating budget to accomplish some of the major tasks such as resurfacing IC roof and so forth, that's where we would do it.
It takes a huge percentage of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
And, and so it's not to say that at any given year we have to put, you know, exactly, you know, fifty thousand dollars away or a hundred thousand dollars away, but it's just to get us thinking about the fact that if we do nothing, that means that our decision is we need to start putting dollars aside and it just becomes very restrictive to be able to continue to do projects within our regular operating budget. And, um, you know, needless to say, that's what's so incredible about the community support for the referendum is the significant amount of work that we're taking on and the improvements we're seeing in our facilities makes not only the referendum successful, but think about what it does to mediate the operating budget that Dave and his team take on so that they have other things that they can use their dollars for. You know, every district has a challenge of just trying to put a Band-Aid on based on what they can afford to fix certain issues, but again, it's just a Band-Aid and eventually that Band-Aid has to be replaced again and again. And you just continue to use operating dollars to put Band-Aids on rather than getting something fixed and fixed right. And I just think it's amazing with this referendum, we have an opportunity to have funds to do things the right way. Now is our job to maintain what, you know, what the referendum does. And so as, as you'll see up on the screen here, and again, it's a little blurry, I apologize, a little too small, um, but in your packet you'll see it as well as the long-range data for years four through eight, so starting with the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, moving out, um, to year thirteen, which is the other document, the last page in the packet. You'll see things that we're trying to do to recognize some big ticket items and some smaller ticket items. Uh, but again, these are things that, yeah, if you look at the bottom of some of these years, you'll see that we're in the two, three, four hundred thousand dollar range with a project budget of a hundred and thirty in preparation, so, um, this would be where we'd have to try to find out someplace else this other side. Not saying it's, it's necessarily realistic, but it's just recognizing that there would be a need there. We're no different than any other district, but nevertheless, um, each district has its own unique characteristics of what its needs are. And based on the referendum, um, again, major improvements, but we still have, and you can, if you can see it, some, some work to do down the road. Remember, we do have debt falling off, this is my little finance, we do have debt falling off in twenty-three, twenty-four timeframe. And so that's something that we talked about many, many times. And so you'll see where twenty-three, twenty-four fits into this category and, um, you know, how we decide to navigate toward that is something that we'll talk about down the road or just know that that component isn't there.
This beautifully springed boards into the board's workshop in two weeks. Uh, so thank you to the both of you for helping set the table so nicely for that discussion as will be key decisions that we're continuing to look to the board for, for their insights and, and direction. Can we answer any questions for you?
Thank you.
Thanks, Allison.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. Moving on to 8A, consideration of approval of us coming hard by that.
Thank you, board members, for allowing us some time to work through this piece here. We've been able to bring some closure to this and ask for your approval if you're not noted.
Motion to approve.
Pushing back around, seconded by Jeff. Any discussion? All of the mayors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving on to 8B, consideration of plan chrome of purchase.
In accordance with the technology plan that we saw earlier this evening, we're asking for the next phase of our purchasing to continue, please.
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Diane. Any discussion? All of the mayors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to 8C, consideration of lab route purchase. Motion by Jeff, seconded by Diane. Any discussion? All of the mayors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to 8B. All right, moving on to A, P, consideration of biotech forwards.
And this would come from the, uh, money that we receive, uh, from the Lazaro Family
Second.
Diane, or seconded by Jeff?
I wrote it down.
Any discussion?
To clarify, for those that are on the finance committee, they have given us fifty thousand dollars for necessary equipment so that one could run this lab, so this is a sizable chunk of the fifty thousand, but, uh, without it, there could not be an operating lab.
Motion by Diane, seconded by Diane. Any further discussion? All of the favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to A, B, consideration of plan of new welding equipment.
Board members, you may recall that, uh, we received a grant that would allow us to receive one-third funding, and we would match two-thirds funding, and, uh, you've approved of that grant, we received that grant, and we're asking for these specific machines to be purchased, please.
Second.
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Diana. Um, any discussion? All of the favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to nine, A, so this is comments. Seeing none, and this list of future agenda items.
Madam President, may I just bring to, uh, the board's attention two items, because they're not topics that are listed as agenda items, I don't need a response from the board tonight, just for me to share the information with you. I've come, and I've been welcome to feedback, uh, from the board at your, at your leisure. I've come to learn, uh, that, uh, our organization meeting, uh, for the board, uh, which typically happens the first week in May, or the first meeting in May, that didn't meet with most board members' needs, and I'm coming to find out that now our board members could be at the reorganization meeting that's planned for May twenty. And so, I'm proposing that we have a board workshop on the twenty-ninth of, of April, and I'd ask if board members could please look at their calendars and get back to me, to let me know if a five-thirty PM meeting on the twenty-ninth of April could work. We would start our normal board workshop at six o'clock, uh, but begin the, the reorganization meeting at five-thirty. Again, not, uh, because it wasn't an agenda item, I can't take that conversation on it tonight, but suffice to say, please do share that with me at your convenience. And then, uh, lastly, uh, board members, I wanted to let you know that the CISA two annual meeting is slated for Monday, excuse me, Tuesday evening, May the twenty-first at six-thirty PM. Uh, in the past, as part of our reorganization meeting, uh, thank you to board member Piscatelli, uh, who has served in that role, and so, in the event that someone chooses to express interest in that, uh, to just begin to maybe pencil that in. And then lastly, uh, one item, uh, before I take a question, is wanna invite all board members to a very special evening, uh, it's May the first, it's a Wednesday night, five-thirty PM, it's a retirement celebration of all those outstanding professionals who have spent their career here in Mount Fork. Cynthia Swart, thank you for pulling this all together, we're gonna have it over at the Grand State Hotel, and, uh, it will be a delight, so thank you. If you could use RSVP to coordinator, uh, coordinator Swart here as the means, that would be wonderful. I'm sorry, Danny, I cut you off.
I was just gonna say, if we move the reorganization, um, can we put Saw back to six PM on the twentieth, because currently it's at five PM?
Yes, we can.
Great.
Yeah, good, good, I'll just read. So, thank you for allowing me to, to update you a little bit on weekends.
We're at number twelve.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Brad, seconded by Jeff.